Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session, July 9, 2013. At this time, we call on this meeting to order at 6:10 PM. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Kuplinsky.
Present.
Ms. Reed.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Summerford.
Here.
Mr. Weber.
Present.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. In case you're in a moment of silence, Ms. Smith, please.
At this time, I'd ask we all bow our heads and keep the families of Mr. Raymond White in our prayers, and also Johnny Lumpkin, who's a very dear friend of mine, childhood friend of mine, that was our 11th victim of homicide this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ted's legions by Ms. Reed.
My legions to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. I'd like to announce that an executive session was held on June 24, 2013, at 4:15 PM in city council chambers. There will be an additional executive session, and will be held this evening in city councils' chambers immediately following this meeting to discuss legal matters. Thank you. Moving on to communications. We actually don't have any communications this evening, but I do want to give a report on the convention I attended on June 25 through the 28th of 2013. On June 25th, 28th, 2013, I attended the PA Municipal League's 114th Convention in State College. This year, at the convention, I was appointed the voting delegate for the city of Harrisburg by the mayor to the Resolutions Committee. The Resolutions Committee consists of a member from each municipality within the state of Pennsylvania, who is a member of the PA Municipal League. Resolution committee members may make motions, vote, and be recognized to speak at the meeting regarding resolutions that are presented to the committee. At this convention, eight resolutions were brought before the committee to consider. One, adoption of National League of Cities 2013 legislative priorities, that A is to protect municipal bonds. Now, the National League of City opposes any attempt to eliminate or limit the traditional tax exempt from initial bonds. Tax exempt municipal bonds are the primary choose that has financed trillions of dollars of public investment for local and state governments. Over 3.7 trillion tax exempt bonds have been issued by 30,000 separate governmental units. B, end the online sales tax brief. The National League of City urges support for the federal government to enact legislation to level the playing field by giving state and local governments the authority to collect sales tax from online merchants. This will generate 23 billion for state and local governments that can be invested in job creation and economic recovery efforts. C, fix the nation's broken immigration system. Passing the Dream Act would add 329 billion to U.S. economy. It would create 1.4 million new jobs by 2030, and add additional 5.6 billion to state and federal household income tax revenue. Number two, reform of collective bargaining and municipal public safety pensions. Act 111 of 1968, the Police and Environment's Collective Bargaining Act, has not been updated for 44 years, and the National League of City is to, has stated, that would save local and state governments annually 2.5 million dollars. I'm sorry, I have my glasses. Number three, prevailing wage reform. This is to increase the threshold to match inflation since the 1960s. Number four, local use of radar. Authorization of the use of radar by all police officers throughout the municipality and county and boroughs. Number five, firefighter cancer presumption. This resolution calls on the General Assembly and administration to mitigate the causes of Act 46 of 2011, which provided a cancer presumption to firefighters under workers' compensation, the presumption being that firefighters contracted cancer from their work. Number six, tax exempt tests. This resolution sets policy to oppose legislation that would lower the threshold test for purely public charities set by the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. This legislation would ultimately impact municipality and their residents in more tax exempt entities. I'm sorry, I can't even see myself. This legislation would ultimately impact municipalities and their residents in more tax exempt entities. Number seven, public-private partnerships. This legislation supports the optional use of public-private partnerships as a tool to finance local government projects. This helps local governments meet public needs without the use of tax revenue or municipal bond financing. And number eight, local option alcohol tax. This resolution urges the General Assembly to include any alcohol privatization bill, a statewide local option drink tax of up to a 10% on drinks sold within a municipality's borders. All the resolutions were adopted at the Resolutions Committee meeting on Wednesday, June 26, 2013, and again at the annual business meeting by the Board of Directors on Thursday, June 27, 2013. There was a majority vote on all of the resolutions, which are now being incorporated into a policy statement for the state league. And the Pennsylvania Municipal League's address is 414 North Second Street, Harrisburg, PA 17101. Their phone number is 717-236-9469. Their website is www.pamunicipalleague.org. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't announce that the speakers at the session were Secretary of Commonwealth Carol Atchell, Rob McCord, Treasurer, Eugene Day Piscopo, Auditor General, and Honorable Mayor Michael Nutter. I would like to thank the PML, that's the Pennsylvania Municipal League, for all of their hard work in the selection of the sessions and classes, and also for the speakers. And that's the end of my report for the convention that I attended. Thank you. Moving on to courtesy of the floor, I'll start with my right.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Boyd. I'm an activist of the community, and this evening, I was supposed to have a sheet concerning the amounts that would be passed on to the people that would be receiving the grant. So, I'm saying this right at this point. The Broad Street Market Corporation. Good evening, Mr. Summerford. You sat on that board. I have spoke to you numerous times about complaints about the Broad Street Market, their lack of professionalism, also the president of that corporation that you sat on. I'm still waiting for something from you. So, this evening, I say once again, community is community. But, once again, I'm saying to you, when someone can practice racial slurs, being biased, speaking in front of their own so-called situations there, and you are familiar with that, even this evening with that 87,000 supposedly that they're supposed to be receiving, Mr. Summerford, I look at you and say these words, "I am shocked at you." Once again, I said, "I don't have that paper," but as I said, "I am from this community, and I'm saying this with protest. You know what's going on." And for you to sit there and act like there is nothing going on at all, Mr. Summerford, once again, you are from this community. And at this time, I say to you directly, and look in your eyes and say this, "I am shocked." But 87,000, nothing but peanuts. But then again, if we do the correct thing in our city, if we stop shaking hands with the devil, so to speak, things can work. Once again, I say this, once again, I know that there are other fundings going toward the Broad Street Market, that was said, but you know what's going on there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Anyone else to my right? Anyone else in the middle, please?
Yeah, my name is Lionel Gonzalez. I live in the city on Fulton Street. And thank you, distinguished body, which I'm very proud of them, of you. I just want to share with you that I am part of the Harrisburg, friend of Midtown Food Patrol, and I'm helping the city, the security, the police, to watch crime. We do that, well, this week, last week, we did it twice, like, four hours. And tonight, no, no, Thursday and Friday, we're going to be out again. But we are trying just to drop a little piece of ground for the safety, because I know this body has done a lot. And again, thank you a lot, okay?
Thank you. Anyone else in the middle?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Mary Hess, and I'm a current vendor at the Broad Street Market. I was also a vendor there several years ago, in 2004 and 2005. As you probably know, and there's been a lot of publicity about it, the market has been plagued with two shutdowns due to cleanliness issues, a general decline in the number of vendors doing business in the market, a deterioration in the physical condition of the buildings, ineffective negative management, and a definite decline in the public opinion about the market, as evidenced in the recent article in the paper. The Broad Street Market Corporation has been managing the day-to-day operation of the market since 1996. In its original agreement with the city, it had a clear plan for revitalizing the market, and it's a wonderful plan. This plan has never been implemented, and the market has never really made a significant turnaround. They have had ample time to do this, but they failed to do so. Without an improvement in the management of this market, the city is facing the loss of a very valuable asset. City Council needs to conduct an investigation about this mismanagement and explore other options for a new model for managing the market successfully, because we really need the market to be successful. The vendors, customers, and residents of the city, and the Harrisburg region, need your support and decisive action to make the Broad Street Market the thriving marketplace it truly must become, and we all need to work together to make this happen. Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Hess. Anyone else in the middle? Anyone to my right, my left?
Good evening, Honorable Counsel, Madam President, Juanne Williams, Ron Chappell, Third Street, Harrisburg. I attended the Harrisburg Recovery Meeting a few weeks ago. In my two tours in the United States Marine Corps, I've never seen so much brown-nosing in my life than I saw at the recovery meeting. Now, I am a resident of Harrisburg, a tax-paying citizen of Harrisburg. And when I went to address William Lynch about why he allowed our health code officer to be released, something that's very important to the welfare and health of Harrisburg residents, the looks that I got from a lot of the other people sitting on the panel, and in this audience, the audience at the time, seemed to suggest that I, as a Harrisburg resident, had no right in questioning this unelected official that I believe is sent here as nothing more than an agent to make sure that the stockholders get paid. You know? And I want to remind everybody, and even that panel, that even the President of the United States of America is questioned. So, who was Willie Lynch not to be questioned? You know, everybody was General this, General that, General this, people that have never served one day in the military. They act like they were sitting in the Pentagon. You know, and it's sad, it was very, very sad. You know, I have a right to have my grievances redressed, and I have a right to speak up, and I'm gonna keep on doing it. You know, and I want to remind everybody that y'all know where I stand. My name is Ron Chappell, that's spelled R-O-N-C-H-A-P-E-L, in case somebody wants to write it in for something later on this year. I've been before this council more than 60 times over the past couple of years. You all know where I stand. There's no surprises with me, you know? There's no experimenting with me. You know, I've always spoken up and spoke out, you know, for the concern of the residents of Harrisburg, and I intend on doing so continually. Ron Chappell, R-O-N-C-H-A-P-E-L, is wishing you all a safe and happy vacation.
Thank you, Mr. Chappell. Anyone else to my left? CNN, thank you, Mr. Chappell. Before I move on to approval of minutes, I would like to acknowledge that I have received numerous phone calls regarding Mr. Kuplinsky as the speaker at the City Council Roundtable Session in State College. I understand you did an excellent job for the city of Harrisburg, and I would just like to say thank you, Mr. Kuplinsky. Moving on to approval of minutes, approval of the Legislative Session minutes of June 11, 2013. If there's any deletions, omissions, or corrections, council members. Here and now, would I like to have a vote, please? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Reports of committees. Report by Chair Summerford on the Building and Housing Committee meeting on June 12, 2013. Mr. Summerford, are you ready for that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. There was a quick meeting on June 12 regarding vendors being placed on a website so that the residents of Harrisburg are able to see who are doing business with the city. I think that that is a necessary thing, that we should know who has contracts with the city, and it should be made available on the website as well as city council's office. It was said by Mr. Kluck that that information does appear on the comptroller's website. And that's wonderful, although it's not exactly what I wanted. What I wanted was administration to make sure that that information is available. The comptroller handles his website on his own, and when, or if he leaves, a new comptroller will not be obligated to do such. So, it was pretty clear to me that it is still a resolution that needs to be done, and it will be coming up for a vote later on this evening, and I'm hoping that my colleagues vote in favor of having that information on the website as well as in the city council's office.
Thank you, Ms.
And that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Summerford. Moving on to report by Chair Reed on the Public Works Committee meeting of June 17, 2013. Ms. Reed, are you ready for that report?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Public Works meeting was held on June 17, 2013. Present were President Williams, Councilman Weber, Councilwoman Kuplinsky, Councilwoman Wilson. From the administration was Kevin Hager, the Public Works Director, Jason Hess, our city solicitor. Also present was Susan Weldon, President of the Local Union, and Shannon Williams from the Harrisburg Authority. Discussions were held on Bill 5, 2013, Bill 16, 2013, Bill 18, 2013. Bill 5 of 2013, the secondary renaming of Second Street to the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. It was decided by this chairperson to hold Bill 5 in committee until the proper funding can be approved by the receiver and ensure that the budget reallocations can be made. To add 63 signs would be at a cost of $6,000 to $8,000. To do so would pull people out of their normal duty also to do so. At this time, with the loss of our health officer, this council finds it more important to reallocate funding to ensure that we can pay for critical staff positions throughout the city. Also, with the limited budget and growing amounts of maintenance in the Parks and Recs/ Public Works Department, we have a growing concern from the citizens that the beautification and maintenance of our parks, waterways, and waterways are not being maintained, and we must be able to utilize those funds for those other purposes. Bill 16 of 2013, also known as the Collection and Disposal Charges Bill. What this bill does is it standardizes the rates that we charge for multi-unit residences and commercial properties for trash collection and disposal. Harrisburg has been innovated with single-family homes that have been converted into multifamily apartment units, and because we need to ensure that these units are being properly charged for trash collection and disposal, a request was made by Councilwoman Wilson for the Public Works Director to use State Street 1,300 block to 1,700 block as a guide to check as to how many single-dwelling homes have been converted to multifamily dwellings based on the amount of electric meters on the homes and mailboxes. Since our meeting, the Public Works Director did go out and hand-count the number of units per home based on the mailboxes and electric meters. I'm asking for approval for this bill, as it would help us to ensure that we've established a standard rate table for commercial properties and help us identify future homes that were converted to multifamily housing. Bill 18. Bill 18 is known as the Refuse and Disposal Bill. This bill establishes some new and reiterates other municipal trash regulations. The highlights of this bill allow the residents to have one bulk recycling container, up to six bags per home per week, one bulk item per week, and was requested more clarification be given onto what can and cannot be collected with the normal collection and what's considered as bulk items. We also added specific timeframes as to when residents are allowed to put their trash out and put their trash cans on the curb. This was amended especially because of the rental units and multiple dwelling apartments, the trash cans are left in the alleys, front sidewalks, for permanent storage and for their trash cans. We want to make it very clear to all residents, whether they rent or own, that the alleys and the front sidewalks are not proper storage for your trash cans. They are to be placed inside of your fenced yard or on your property out of the right-of-way with the exception of the day of the collection, and they must contain a trash can lid. This bill is part of a comprehensive solution to trash that plagues the city. As the Chair of Public Works, I have taken trash on firsthand and how the improper placement and disregard for your neighbor's trash goes directly to the quality of life issues in this city. This bill gives us, gives the residents an easier way of disposing of bulk items, yet it also standardizes, once and for all, how and when your trash will be placed out at your residence. Bottom line is that no one wants to look at your smelly, stinky, disgusting trash all week long. Since the meeting, the bill has been amended to define in the ordinance exactly what we classify as bulk items and what can and cannot be picked up. I'm asking for approval of this bill so we can move forward and finally get the entire city on the same page when it comes to trash.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
I'm not finished.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
During our working meeting, we discussed several other hot Public Works topics, which included streetlights, the Fourth Street Project, and high weeds and grass. Streetlights are a high priority in the Public Works Department. The Public Works Director has established a procedure for handling outages and prioritizing which lights get worked on. They have been worked on by the mayor's, they have been working with the mayor's safety zone program and been able to repair streetlights and entire section. Streetlights can be different in each neighborhood, so the streetlight former uses a GSI database that records all of the information about the 5,600 streetlights, so that when he dispatches someone to a repair, all of the necessary equipment is on the truck. The primary goal is to get all of the streetlights up and working, and currently, there are about 1,600 streetlights throughout the city that are not currently working. The secondary goal is to convert all of the lights to energy-efficient LED lighting. Fourth Street. Discussion was held as to what was causing the backfill of the sewage in the basement of the residential homes on Fourth Street. After the sewer line was replaced, most of the residents on Fourth Street do not have a backflow system. The line was taken out, the line that was taken out was an 1890 terracotta and was replaced with a 2013 PVC, and the flow has changed, and the lines in the homes are still using the antiquated lines into the main system, so there are being, there may be a change in their pressure. There is no definitive way of knowing that this has happened, why this has happened, but there is new pressure in the lines. It is recommended to the homeowners to have a certified plumber come out and check their system, and look into getting insurance to cover the lines. Conversation included party lines and aging tie-ins to the homes. The city sent out letters to the homeowners about a new insurance program that the properties can, the property owners can purchase, and it was rolled out by the mayor in a press conference. It is recommended that the mayor have a town hall meeting on this and have it televised so that the residents can get more information on the sewer line insurance program. High grass and weeds. A crucial piece of equipment was down, which caused the backup of the maintenance on the high grass, especially along the riverfront. The tires were flat and especially had to be specially ordered and replaced. The Public Works expects to have the equipment back and running within two weeks. Since the meeting, the machine has been repaired and up and running. Public Works has established a procedure for volunteer groups that want to offer their assistance with cutting grass or maintaining any part of the city. They need to coordinate with the Public Works Director to ensure that all persons understand any safety and liability concerns, and any trash that is acquired, accumulated, can be picked up promptly. We have two contractors that cut grass for us, and we, and many of our colleagues, many of my colleagues asked for a copy of that contract. That is the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Moving on, report by Chair Wilson on the Community Economic Development Committee meeting of June 18, 2013. Ms. Wilson, are you ready for your report?
Yeah, I'm gonna be a lot shorter than you. So, we have to the point. You have to run through here all night long. Anyways, thank you. Community Economic Development Committee had a meeting on June 18. All council members were present with the exception of Ms. Kuplinsky, who had other business. However, the discussion of the meetings focused on the CBVG grants that have been applied for them. So, I'm gonna take the time to go through them so people understand where we are. But more importantly, I think I want the community to know that in the funding stream that we've had over the last five years, from 2008 up to this point, the funding source has actually gone down. So, if we start from 2008, we had originally had a total of $2.7 million, and it had gone up in 2009 to 2.8. In 2010, it was 2.9 million. In 2011, it dropped down to 2.5 million, and of course, in 2012, it dropped to 2.4. So, essentially, what I'm saying to you is, as we continue to go through reallocation and looking at funding sources and streams that come into this, at least into the city, what we need to recognize is that federal government is not giving us as much as we used to have. And so, it was suggested, even in the meeting that I held, that as people come in and start asking for funding to support their activities within this community, we need to start looking at programs that are new within the city, programs that have actually received funding over the last couple of years. It's time to shake it up a little bit here, because what we found over the last five years, or probably the last 10 or even longer than that, some of the same individuals, not necessarily people, but same programming, has continued to get support. So, we're gonna suggest that next year, whoever has this program, that they will actually start looking at some new programming versus continuing to support some of the old ones. But let me just take through a few of them that are actually gonna be changing, and so the public understands there have been some reductions when we look at public service activities. While the Police Act of the League had originally asked for $45,000, we reduced that to $25,000. Christian Recovery Active Care Ministries, they had asked for 25, and of course, their representative actually suggested that they could afford to give up $5,000. So, we ended up taking 5 from that, and then, of course, we granted to Christian Love Ministries $10,000. There were two that we did not give anything to, which was the Community First Fund and Dress for Success. So, my suggestion would be next year, we need to look at those two programs and understand what could they use in this community to do for some other programming. As far as housing and community economic development activities, Camp Kirk YMCAs, they originally wanted 75,000. We granted them 100,000. They have a major renovation that's going on up there on Sixth Street. It plays a fundamental role within this community in terms of supporting- It plays a fundamental role within this community in terms of supporting our children, and so we might as well put our money where our mouth is. We're talking about trying to get our kids off the street, so, and that's a place, and the individual that's running that programming is actually taking that program from a negative because they were in the rear of about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the negative, and they brought it to the good. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, that program was worthwhile even increasing it if we could have given them more if we would have. However, then we go to our Broad Street Market, which we own. They originally asked for twenty-seven thousand, we actually gave them forty-seven thousand dollars, because they're going to do some renovations in terms of putting in accessibility, dealing with impact, and it's important, and doors and things of that nature. There is funding that's still there, but nevertheless, we needed to support it. It belongs to us, and we need to make sure that we maintain it. The African-American Chamber of Commerce, they originally wanted sixty thousand, we reduced that to ten thousand. They've actually moved from their location, and they're into a new facility, and so, of course, it's ten thousand to continue with their programming. And then the last one that we actually, they asked for nothing, but we actually are supporting them, to Harrisburg Housing Authority. They are actually building, they're doing the renovation of the Jackson Lake Apartments, and that's going to be for the elderly. And there were two particular units that they wanted support on, and while we could not support them a hundred percent, we at least provided them with some support. So as we continue to go through this, there will be changes, I hope, next year, like I said, for those programs. I didn't get anything, I really encourage people to apply next year, but it's important that we try to shake things up a little bit here. In addition to those activities, we have our Emergency Solutions Grants Program where we actually had a reduction later in the agenda. And so at the time that I read the bill, I'll read those reductions, because I think it's important for people to understand, when money gets tight, everything flows downhill, and there was adjustment across the board in every one of the categories, from the Grant Administration to Christian Churches United, Shalom House, and Y W C A. So, that's all I have to say at this time, and then I'll read those in the record as well.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Moving on to ordinance for first reading, Bill twenty-two thousand thirteen. Mr. Petrowski, please read it into record.
Bill twenty of two thousand thirteen was moved by Ms. Williams and seconded by Ms. Smith. It's an ordinance to increase the twenty-thousand-dollar transfer threshold, which triggers the need for City Council approval, to fifty thousand for reallocations as set forth in the appropriation and expenditure procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. That will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. And also, I just want the public to know that we did receive a letter from John Campbell, who is our city treasurer, and it's regarding Bill twenty of two thousand thirteen. And he says, "On the City Council agenda for its first reading this evening, Bill twenty of two thousand thirteen is an ordinance to increase the twenty-thousand-dollar transfer threshold, which triggers the need for City Council approval to fifty thousand dollars for reallocations as set forth in the appropriation and expenditure procedures. While this legislation may seem like an opportunity to allow for great flexibility in spending by the administration, it is my opinion that this legislation will only reduce the proper controls that are presently in place and exercised by City Council. If this legislation were to be approved, budget transfers would begin to become more frequent and thus negate the importance of passing a proper and reasonable budget annually. These controls are necessary to encourage fiscal responsibility and conservatism, especially at a time when the city's cash position is in flux. It is the hope of my office that City Council rejects Bill twenty of two thousand thirteen in order to maintain necessary and proper budgetary controls. If you have any questions, please contact me directly at johncampbell@cityofharrisburg.com, or seven-one-seven-nine-one-nine-three-two-two-oh." And I just want to make sure that the public is aware of the fact that the city treasurer is not approving Bill twenty-two thousand thirteen. He is very upset behind the fact that he will not have proper controls. So this legislation will be placed in Budget and Finance, and Mr. Kuplinsky, I'm sure will invite Mr. Campbell for any other information that is needed.
Certainly.
Ordinance for amendment, Bill thirteen of two thousand thirteen. Mr. Petrowski, please read that.
Bill thirteen of two thousand thirteen was moved by Ms. Wilson and seconded by Ms. Reed. It's an ordinance appropriating community development block grant funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year two thousand thirteen and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
Thank you. We will be voting on that tonight. Bill fourteen of two thousand thirteen. Oh, you have an amendment for that? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Some, some of. Second?
Second.
I need a second?
Second.
Thank you.
CBVG funds have been amended as follows. Police Academically, forty-five thousand to twenty-five thousand. Christian Recovery Active Care Ministries for twenty-five thousand to twenty thousand. Christian Love Ministries for forty-five thousand to ten thousand. Camp Curtain Wide, M C A, seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand. Broad Street Market Corporation from twenty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-nine to forty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand. African-American Chamber of Commerce for sixty thousand, dropped to ten thousand. And Harrisburg Housing Authority originally had zero, we increased that to sixty-five thousand. The total CBVGs funding is now one million, seven-hundred-sixty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-two dollars, and those are the changes that I will make.
Any questions or comments regarding that amendment? If not, call the vote, please.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Summerford?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Amendment passes.
Thank you. Please read Bill fourteen, two thousand thirteen, if it's in record, please. Mr. Petrowski?
Bill fourteen of two thousand thirteen was moved by Ms. Wilson and seconded by Ms. Reed. It's an ordinance appropriating Emergency Solutions Grant Program Funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year two thousand thirteen and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
Ms. Wilson, you have an amendment to make to that?
I'd like to make a motion to make several amendments to the Emergency Solutions Grant Program.
Some of. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Grant administrations. Changes are eleven thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, down to ten thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. Christian Churches United is originally seventy-one thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-two dollars, and that will be decreased down to sixty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars. The Shalom House Operations was originally thirty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars, that is being decreased down to thirty thousand dollars. The Y W C A, Superior Harrisburg, was originally thirty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars, and that is going to be increased down to thirty thousand dollars. So the total D S G is one-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Summerford?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Amendment passes.
Moving on to Bill sixteen of two thousand thirteen, please read that into record. Mr. Petrowski?
Bill sixteen of two thousand thirteen was moved by Ms. Reed and seconded by Mr. Weber. It's an ordinance amending Chapter nine dash three oh seven of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, known as Collection and Disposal Charges by categorizing multi-unit residential properties containing more than four units as commercial properties for purposes of rate setting and by amending the commercial collection and disposal rates to be consistent with EPA estimates for measuring the weight of municipal waste.
I would like to make a motion to make two amendments.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Under the first whereas, I would like to make an amendment to delete and operate. It should read, "Whereas, the Harrisburg Authority currently owns the Resource Recovery Facility."
Okay.
Under Section nine dash three oh seven, rates, the paragraph is amended to read as follows. Multi-unit rooming house, the rate for each rooming house unit, rooming house shall be fifty percent of the standard collection rate set forth above the single-family residential property, provided that at least one full single-family rate shall be applicable to each property.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, council members, regarding this amendment? Please call the vote.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Summerford?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Amendment carries.
Thank you. Moving on to Bill eighteen of two thousand thirteen, please read that into record.
Bill eighteen of two thousand thirteen was moved by Ms. Reed and seconded by Mr. Weber. It's an ordinance amending certain sections of Title nine, Part three, refuse and disposal relating to the placement and removal of municipal waste containers and recycling containers.
Ms. Reed, do you have an amendment to this bill?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to make several amendments.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Under municipal waste, adding the following. Any garbage, refuse, industrial, lunchroom, or office waste, other material, including solid, liquid, semi-solid, or contained gasses material resulting from the operation of residential municipal or commercial institutional establishment from the community activities. This includes, but not limited to, the following bulk items. File cabinets, chairs, air conditioners, tables, desks, stoves, water heaters, clothes washer, clothes washers, clothes dryers, refrigerators, freezers, sofa box, sofas, box springs, mattresses, entertainment units. This term does not include hazardous waste, recyclable material, and sewage, sludge, sewage sludge, batteries, tires, or construction and demolition material.
Thank you. Under. I know, I know, I know you're moving on to, but you need to pause because you need to let them know that you're moving on to, you're making several amendments to two different. Go ahead.
I'm not going to breathe anymore. Under nine-three-zero-three dash thirteen, placement of bulk items. This paragraph should read as follows. Each residential unit is permitted to place one bulk item out per week at the point of collection required by Section nine-three-zero-three dash seven, provided that such item is not in otherwise prohibited from municipal waste collection, such item is of size can be handled by the persons responsible for waste collection. If such item cannot be collected by the person responsible for waste collection, the person who has placed such item must remove it within twenty-four hours. Failure to remove such item within twenty-four hours is a violation of the ordinance by the person who has placed such item. Any bulk item placed for collection in excess of the allotted one per week per residential unit will be collected for disposal, and that residential unit will be charged accordingly for such service.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, council members? I certainly have one. I just want to make sure that the public knows that, I hope that the Public Works Department will let them know if they're not going to do waste pickup that day, because sometimes you have to change your schedule. In cases like that, will you alert the public to the fact that you're not going to pick up the waste that day, so that they won't be in violation of placing an item out? Because that's just like the street cleaning. Some days, you know, when there's street cleaner, machines break down and we don't, and they still are giving tickets, and the public's not, you know, being notified the fact that there's not going to be street cleaning that day. I certainly don't want them to be charged if you're not going to be able to pick up their trash refusal that day.
I guess I have a comment, too. Under the part of the lids for the trash cans, my concern with that is that in a lot of cases, our staff are the culprits of missing lids on trash cans. If you've ever observed trashmen picking up trash, they don't actually take the lid off and hold it and dump the can, they take the lids and throw them up the street. And my concern is, is that we might be opening a can of worms on this one, because I know in my case, I replaced four trash cans within a year because they kept taking my trash can lid off and throwing it when they take the trash off. So that's one thing that I would be cautioned with in the case with the lids for the trash cans, because I've observed them take the trash can lids off and throw them, and especially on a windy day, they're gone. So that would be my concern with enforcing citations for trash cans without lids.
Any other comments or questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, Madam Vice President, the goal of this ordinance is primarily to establish a procedure. As of right now, in the City of Harrisburg as a whole, there is no established procedure, no standardized procedure as to where people are to place their trash cans, how they're put their trash cans. Most residential units don't even have a trash can. This is to establish, going forward, as of right now, there is no enforcement on the ordinances. We will be looking at hiring a recycling coordinator to do enforcement, but as of right now, what this ordinance does is it gives the public an opportunity to get themselves in order and to establish a standard procedure for placing your trash. And if you are one of those tenants that have a problem with your trash can lids, at the time when you place them out, leave your trash can lids in your yard, and when your trash can is collected, when your trash is collected, place your lids back on it at that time.
I don't, I don't have a problem with the ordinance that you're putting forward. I'm just saying that it could become an issue and a concern in terms of the lids. I'm all on board with the rest of it.
Okay. And I agree. I concur with Ms. Smith. I don't have a problem with the ordinance. I certainly like to see the ordinance being on record, but I have a problem with the waste collection when we're not able to do waste collection, because it's a known factor that some of our trucks break down, and we don't do waste collection. I don't want the residents to be fined in violation if we're not picking up the trash that day. So that's my only concern. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Summerford?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Amendment carries.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance for final passage, as amended, Bill thirteen of two thousand thirteen.
Bill thirteen of two thousand thirteen was moved by Ms. Wilson and seconded by Mr. Kuplinsky. Bill thirteen as amended is an ordinance appropriating community development block grant funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for the fiscal year two thousand thirteen and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, council members, on the amended bill? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Summerford?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Bill fourteen as amended passes.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, council members, on the amended bill? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Summerford?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Bill fourteen as amended passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Bill fifteen, two thousand thirteen.
Bill fifteen of two thousand thirteen was moved by Ms. Wilson and seconded by Mr. Kuplinsky. It's an ordinance appropriating Home Investment Partnership Program Funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year two thousand thirteen and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
Thank you. Any questions or comment on Bill fifteen, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Summerford?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Bill fifteen passes.
Thank you. As amended, Bill sixteen of two thousand thirteen.
Bill sixteen of two thousand thirteen as amended was moved by Ms. Reed and seconded by Mr. Weber. It's an ordinance amending Chapter nine dash three oh seven of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, known as Collection and Disposal Charges by categorizing multi-residential properties containing more than four units as commercial properties for purposes of rate setting and by amending the commercial collection and disposal rates to be consistent with EPA estimates for measuring the weight of municipal waste.
Any additional questions or comments on Bill sixteen? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Summerford.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Bill sixteen as amended passes.
Thank you. As amended, Bill eighteen of two thousand and thirteen.
Bill eighteen of two thousand and thirteen as amended was moved by Ms. Reed and seconded by Mr. Weber. It's an ordinance amending certain sections of Title nine, Part three, refuse and disposal relating to the placement and removal of municipal waste containers and recycling containers.
Thank you. Any questions on the amended Bill eighteen? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Kaplinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Reed.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Summerford.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Bill eighteen as amended passes.
Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution nineteen of two thousand and thirteen, please read Resolution nineteen in the record, please. Mr. Petrowski.
Resolution nineteen of two thousand and thirteen was moved by Mr. Summerford and seconded by Mr. Weber. It's a resolution requesting that the administration create and maintain a current list of all vendors and businesses licensed under the City of Harrisburg Codified Ordinances five dash seven, one, five, point eight business privilege and market tile license on the city website, and that said list denote in a clear and concise manner those vendors and businesses that are engaged in providing goods and/or services to the city.
Any questions, comment on Resolution nineteen, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Kaplinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Reed.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Summerford.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Resolution nineteen passes.
Moving on to Resolution twenty-three of two thousand and thirteen, please read that into record.
Resolution twenty-three of two thousand and thirteen was moved by Ms. Williams and seconded by Ms. Smith. It's a resolution approving an option to purchase and the issuance of a quit claim deed to Harrisburg Area Community College for the location of the former Wildwood Conference Center.
That would be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution twenty-four, two thousand and thirteen, read that in the record, please. Mr. Petrowski.
Resolution twenty-four of two thousand and thirteen was moved by Ms. Williams and seconded by Ms. Smith. It's a resolution approving the request of Philip J. Dobson, Dobson Entertainment Incorporated to transfer liquor license R dash one, one, eight, two, three from Vic Tim Incorporated, Washington Township, Dolphin County into the City of Harrisburg to be utilized at one, 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 nine, South Cameron Street, which is to operate as a full restaurant facility.
That will be placed in Economic Development Committee. Resolution twenty-five of two thousand and thirteen, please read that into record. Mr. Petrowski.
Resolution twenty-five of two thousand and thirteen was moved by Mr. Kaplinsky and seconded by Mr. Weber. It's a resolution approving the second proposed two thousand and thirteen budget reallocations.
And that will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to old business, council members, are there any old business? Hearing none, we're moving on to new business, council members?
Yes, I have new business. I'd like to make an announcement that the, there will be a second annual Harrisburg High School Seventies Alumni Barbecue and Reunion. That will be Friday, July twelfth, two thousand and thirteen. The evening will kick off a tour and reception at six P.M. to eight P.M. at John Harris Campus. Friday night sets it off with our old-school, bring-your-own-bottle cabaret. DJ Galen Allen and the Gay Myla Productions will be from nine to one P.M. at the National Guard Armory Center at Fourteenth and Calder Street at the bypass. Saturday, July thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen, there will be a barbecue cookout, family-style, bring-your-own-grill, and that will be from two P.M. to nine P.M., and that will also be at the National Guard Armory, Fourteenth and Calder Street bypass. The tickets are twenty-five dollars for the entire weekend. For more information and to purchase a ticket, call the Seventies Alumni Group at seven-one-seven Proceeds from this reunion will benefit the children in the Harrisburg School District. I don't know if people are aware of it or not, but the Seventies Alumni Group came up with some funding to help with the sports programs for the children last year at the high school. So I would encourage all of the alumni from the Seventies, the first-generation Cougars, to participate in the reunion. Also, I'd like to announce that we now have five new officers. They were sworn in on July third, two thousand and eleven, here in the City Government Center. And in addition to that, we had over a dozen distinguished awards, but there's two I'd like to speak to, and that is Patrol Officer of the Year. That was Officer Darren Bates. We'd like to congratulate Mr. Officer Bates on his award. Also, Distinctive Award of the Year for Detective Timothy Carter. Timothy has been with the force for several years. He's my neighbor. I consider him a good friend, and we'd like to congratulate these officers and their families on their accomplishments. Also, we have a community event scheduled for Sunday, August the twenty-fifth, up at Reservoir Park, and this is an event that is reaching out to our young people, and we'd like to do some, the gentlemen would like to do an outreach to reduce the violence in our community. So I would encourage people to come out and support Mr. John Holmes, who is heading up this, and it's Old School Appreciation Day up at Reservoir Park, August the twenty-fifth, beginning at eleven A.M. to five P.M. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Now, President, can I just thank Councilman Summerford for his dedicated service to the community, and especially for the time that he takes with our youth. I wanted to know as a resident, I really appreciate it, as many do. And I want to let you know that a lot of your detractors don't need to live in Harrisburg.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Summerford. Excuse me.
No, not, not, eh, eh, eh.
That's the way it should go.
Wait, 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 wait. I, I...
Have a good evening, Council.
Wait a minute.
What's good for the goose is good for the goose again.
Wait, Mr. Boyd, Mr. Boyd, just a minute, just a minute.
Have a good night, sister.
Okay. Mr. I was going to give him an opportunity to speak. We generally don't do that, Mr. Chapel. You had an opportunity to come to the mic, but I did support it this time, but the next time, please don't holler out like that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Now, moving on, council members, any other new business? I'm sorry, I apologize for those...
Yeah, I would just like to take a minute to remind the community that the Gus Macker three-on-three basketball tournament, which was supposed to be held over the Fourth of July holiday weekend, was postponed until the weekend of August seventeenth and eighteenth. You can still register teams online at W-W-W dot Macker dot com. That's W-W-W dot M-A-C-K-E-R dot com. For additional information, please call the Parks Recreation and Enrichment Department at seven-one-seven-two-five-five-three-zero-two-zero. Thank you. Let's get our hoops on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Um, yes.
All right, okay. Ms. Reed, and I'll come back to you, Ms. Smith, since you have an opportunity. Ms. Reed?
Yes, I just want to make sure that the public is aware that the Harrisburg, we're having the Wild West Auction. That will, auction will be held July fifteenth through the twenty-first. The preview of the items will be July twelfth through the fourteenth, which will be out at the Public Works Center. And the auction will actually be held on City Island, July fifteenth through the twenty-first. This is a great opportunity for those that are into artifacts and buying some memorabilia. They have a very good selection. You can go to Gurney's website, that's G-U-R-N-E, G-U-E-R-N-S-E-Y-S dot com, and you can check out their artifacts. You can actually see some of the displays and things. Again, that's July fifteenth through the twenty-first on City Island.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. And Ms. Smith.
Well, I actually wanted to announce the Sean McCoy event up at Reservoir Park. Is Ms. Robison still around for the date? Do you know the date?
August the third.
August the third. Sean McCoy will be at Reservoir Park, having a Youth Day for Our Children. Thank you.
Okay. One more time, is anyone else? Okay. I have a couple announcements myself. First of all, Tri-County Housing announces lease purchase opportunities. Together with Mayor Linda Thompson and others, Tri-County will cut the ribbon on a beautiful, newly rehabilitated home that is part of its lease purchase program. What is lease purchase? Home ownership can be hard to achieve for low and moderate-income families. Our lease purchase program provides an excellent opportunity to live in a newly renovated home while receiving help to repair credit and other problems. Call two-three-one-three-six-zero-four or visit our website, T-C-H-D-C dot net for more information. When is the ribbon cutting? It's July twenty-third at eleven-thirty A.M. where one-five-two-O Swat Howard Street, Harrisburg, PA, one-seven-one-zero-four. The partners involved in this program is Tri-County HDC, City of Harrisburg, United States Department of Urban and Housing Development, Community Action Commission, Citizens Bank Foundation, Waikia Wells Fargo Foundation, the Greater Harrisburg Foundation, PNC Foundation, PP&amp;L Corporation, and the Susquehanna Bank Foundation. That's July twenty-third at eleven-thirty A.M. Moving on, second annual Harrisburg Police fundraiser, Dancing with the Stars of Harrisburg, a red carpet affair, Friday, August sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen, from six P.M. to eleven P.M. at the National Civil War Museum at Reservoir Park. General admission is one hundred dollars. Dance show only at nine P.M., twenty-five dollars. Come out and support PAL for the acquisition of a new PAL athletic complex. Your celebrity judges are Mayor Linda Thompson, Ed Marsickel, and they have here a surprise judge. Your dancers are listed here alongside the literature. I will put that up in the hallway to make sure that everyone sees and knows who's dancing. I do know, and that Oaks, Captain Oaks is dancing, Representative Kim, Patty Kim, I think this is Ms. Jenkins, Corporal Jenkins, I can't see everybody on here. And...
That's Val from the news.
Oh, Val from Twenty-seven, Valerie Pritchett, and...
And that's, what's the other voice name?
Dave Marcheski.
No, no.
Dave Marcheski.
Oh, Dave Marcheski, from Twenty-seven News? Okay, Dave Marcheski. So that's the five dancers. And that's Friday, August sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen.
No Alcanosa?
No Al...
Everybody's got a work.
No, I can't hardly, I don't see Al on here. Are you the surprise judge?
There is a surprise...
They have a surprise judge here.
I was at...
Okay, okay. Moving on, Youth Advocate presents Peace Street, July nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen, from eleven A.M. to three o'clock P.M. It's at twenty-thirty North Third Street, Harrisburg, PA, featuring art in the garden. Backpacks will be given away, balloons and T-shirt giveaways as well. It's engaging our youth and families in thoughts and actions that contribute towards building strong and peaceful communities. Enjoy free food, create artwork and jewelry, raffles and entertainment. Learn about other service providers that work to make Harrisburg a more peaceful place, again, July nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen, from eleven A.M. to three o'clock P.M. Also, the Municipal Financial Recovery Advisory Committee meeting is tomorrow at eight-thirty A.M. here in Council Chambers. Also, there will be a celebrity softball game at Metro Bank Park on Saturday, July thirteenth, to benefit the Moself Baseball League called Danny Lazana First...
Lanzana.
Lazana First Annual Celebrity Softball Game.